Yeah.
They work. They work. We're connected. This is light up.
Yeah, peaceful evening then.
What's that? Is it hot enough? Call me Nada, this is not my school's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. I take a motion on the minutes for a five-twentieth meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Twenty-first and the twenty-seventh there.
Twenty-first and twenty-seventh. Interrupted.
Sorry.
Do you second that, Sean?
Yes, I do.
Any discussion? All in favor? Adjustments to the agenda?
I have nothing, sir.
What about comment? Come, let's get something for questions.
It'll come up during the meeting.
Oh, okay. Alright. And I'll move on to five-one. Abatement, Candace Stone. Account ten sixty-one, amount of three hundred and eighteen dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Abatement, twenty-four, Ashley Vulcanin, account thirty-one fifty, in amount of five hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Abatement, John Evans, account four-four-four, in amount of four hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Abatement, John Williams, account sixteen seventy-nine, in amount of sixteen hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Abatement, twenty-seven, Kelly Beavis, account ten twenty-two. I don't see an amount on that one.
It's a denial.
Uh, but that would be why.
Motion to deny.
Any discussion? All? Any discussion? All in favor? Supplemental, supplemental, number six, Ashley Vulcanin, account thirty-one fifty, in amount of three hundred and eighteen dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Review and award of fuel RFP, propane continued.
Alright, so in here you'll see I did include copy of the RFP for the fuel, the one that we left outside was the propane. Concern was ownership of tanks. Check the status of that. The only one really that's gonna be affected here is the tank at the transfer station. The transfer station tank is currently Dead River, but there's also a C and Brown tank still sitting there off to the side. C and Brown is willing to swap those out. Or hook up the C and Brown tank, when I spoke to them directly on the phone. And so, hoping that, moving forward, we're gonna, gonna make motions to make sure we own all the tanks. And then, also, I have spoken to C and Brown, actually was kind enough to send somebody out yesterday, working on an estimate to purchase our own tanks for here. AmeriGas reported to us that they wanted a rounding, about five thousand dollars per tank for the tanks that are in ground currently. When I asked them again if they'd sell them. Those tanks are at least twenty-five years old, so I don't know that that's an option that we really wanna consider. But I'll have more information on that moving forward. So tonight, I'm just asking if we can consider awarding the propane portion. A side note regarding Dead River, they do state that their prices, their prices are not secure until a fixed price agreement is signed, so in other words, their price could fluctuate. So as close as it is to C and Brown, I'm talking within a hundredth of a cent, C and Brown might be the direction I would go.
What's the board think?
Would agree. Motion to approve, a bid from C and Brown.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Just a question.
Yes, Your Honor.
The tank, the Dead River tank, are you gonna wait until that's empty to swap that out? Are you gonna have them drain it?
I'm gonna ask if they'll either give us a refund or just let us sit there until it's drained. I think that makes good sense, they'll use up the fuel, so. That's a good point, I'll make sure that I bring that up to them.
Do they have a date on it, to know how much is in?
Yeah, I'm sure it does. If they take it out, they'll usually write your credit.
Yeah, usually it's a credit or a check or whatever, you know.
Alright. All those in favor? Sewer Department Repair. Whoops, I guess I skipped one there.
Oh, yeah, the waste hauling, yes.
Yes, review and award waste hauling RFP continued.
So this is just a continuation from last week's discussion. We received a couple of bids that were here and there, so. Anyway, I have spoken to Mid-Bane Waste, Mid-Waian Waste does not have a preference, given the contract. If we wanna haul the bulky waste, right, if the bulky waste to another facility, they're, they're fine with that. As that's a, that's a flex, and that's from Mid-Bane Waste directly. As far as Grimals, they also supply us with pricing for just accepting the waste and not doing the hauling. I did speak to two-oh-seven, we weren't prepared, he wasn't prepared to give numbers at that time of hauling to another facility. But, so what you have here is you still have the three bids from four, two-oh-seven Waste, Grimals Industries and Casella. Just as a reminder, Casella was a few minutes late. Grimals hauling to Grimals, which was outside of the contract. I would just probably consider either rebidding this, so it's clear and clear cut to everybody, or looking at two-oh-seven, just my thoughts.
Question.
Go ahead, Dana.
These are two separate bids for the two separate sizes of the containers, correct?
Correct, yeah.
You call one package bid.
Right, you can get one or the other or both, yeah.
I would make a motion to approve the two-oh-seven Waste bid for the fifty-yard hauler at two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
But just that?
Just that one, yeah.
I second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Can I make a motion that we deny all the bids on the hundred-yard hauler and put it back right away?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Well, you were second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Can I ask the follow-up?
Yep.
Cause I was gonna say something too.
Yes, go ahead.
Just to be clear, if we're going back out to bid on, who's hauling it and where it can be hauled to, so if we have a couple different options on where it can be hauled to, it needs to be clear in the bid.
I, I guess my only question would be, how come we didn't come up with that in the first time?
You were asking me?
Well, you were the guy, yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't offered at the time.
Wasn't offered at the time, I thought we put the bid up.
We, yeah, we do put the bid up.
It's part of the bid.
Yeah, it wasn't included in the bid, so.
And to be clear, I, the only reason I've made the motion to deny that bid for all the bids on the hundred-yard haulers, I think the increase was too much.
Okay.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Where are we hauling this bulk weight, is it going to Auburn at the higher rate, or is it either two thirty-five, I believe it's going to Auburn.
We'll make it clear to the town manager on what we want the bid to go out to. How, how we want the bid.
He did it going to Auburn, correct?
Right.
I guess it's going to Auburn.
Okay.
The new bid can be written how we want it written. To, to whatever location or multiple locations. If you had five, let's, if you had five different locations you could send trash to, they could potentially put in five different bids from however many companies that wanna do that. I think you're limited on where it can go and how many companies will haul it, so.
Good.
I think you could reiterate, there's fifty ounces of ones for the demo land. That's the one that's got the whole different price change.
And I think that-
The two thirty-five. That's the one that's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a ton and twenty-five dollars a mattress. But Grimals one, the two dollars Grimals, is only ninety-eight dollars a ton, no mattress.
So that's, I was gonna ask for clarification on that because that's, I didn't read it that way. This is how I read it.
Yeah, the fifty, the fifty-yarder, Ed is correct, that's the one that we have a, I don't wanna mix it up here, so the hundred-yarder is the one that we can, that's the one that has to go back to-
Auburn only.
Auburn only.
Right.
The fifty-yarder is the one that can go elsewhere. For clarification, yeah.
Okay, so that would mean?
Do we wanna revisit that a little?
So that's not how I understood.
It's quite confusing.
Adam, can you explain exactly what the difference is, so that everybody understands what the fifty-yard is going to haul, what the hundred yard is gonna haul, and where they can both go?
Yeah. So the fifty-yarder, the fifty-yarder is the one that hauls the, the bulky waste. The, the demo, if you will, and that can go wherever, wherever we want to. The hundred-yarder is the compactor, the hundred-yarder is the trash. And the trash is what we have a contract with Mid-Bane Waste in Auburn for. So no matter what we do, that trash, the hundred-yarder has to go to Auburn, Mid-Bane Waste. So, that-
I'll keep my motion, they, they were the lowest bidder on the fifty-yarder, and...
I mean, this, this came in on time and they did off what we asked off, correct?
Correct. Two-oh-seven, yes, yep.
Okay. I'll back you up.
Question, is that how you, you were recommending it, Adam?
I feel that, given the fact that two-oh-seven turned it in on time and they gave us a price, that that would be my recommendation, to either go with them or put the whole thing back out to bid. But I think going with them makes sense.
Okay.
Alright, can you tell me what the price was on the hundred-yard last year? It went up considerably. Or this, this request has gone up considerably.
Easy right here, if you don't mind giving answer to that, I think it was two sixty-five, is that correctly, or two?
Yeah, it was around two sixty-five.
Yeah.
My name, my name's Sam Martin from two-oh-seven Waste. We've been servicing, we've served for the past two years, we're done for the service. The trailers, they go to Maine, they go to Seattle. And that's at two sixty-five. The reason it's gone up considerably is because when we go over there now, Maine Waste Energy, they'll wait time to date us. Our truck sits there for two hours at a time. And it's not fair for us to add that fee on to you guys, without you guys approving it. So that's why the rate went up so much. August of twenty-four is when that started happening. Before that, we used to go in there and be in there fifteen minutes, and now if the truck goes in there, sits there for two hours, sits there for an hour, sits there for forty-five minutes. So our time is mine, and that's the reason that price went up.
Question, if you don't mind me asking.
Go ahead, sir.
So, would that potentially change your rate, if you change the day that you, if that's possible for us?
Yeah.
To keep that price lower than what it-
Right, Alex, I wish I could say yes, but that place is very hard to determine, as far as how that place operates. Sometimes they have a burner down or not enough help. So it's really hard to tell. We've tried to narrow it down ourselves, as far as wanting to go in there at the right time.
I'll still, um, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll still, if you need a motion to go back out to bid for the hundred-yard.
You mean?
I mean-
Okay, you second that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
It was in the original motion.
Yeah, to clarify, there's only one place to haul it, so it'll simplify the bid.
So it's, it's to go back out, is that true?
Correct.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Sewer Department Repair.
Alright, so Zenia is here, he brought to our attention that he's got some membranes that are failing. I will just get the shock of it right out of the way here. He's, it looks like it's a hundred and one thousand, a hundred and one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to replace these membranes, which is the reason that we have the Sewer Department Repair Reserve, which has a balance of, or available balance of one hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So Zenia was going to just give you guys a description of what the membranes are and what, why it's important.
Sure.
Unless you're good, yeah.
So we have twenty-four hundred pieces. They're already ten years old, they're part of warranty. And right now, I have six hundred of them, which need to be replaced. So, when you guys start replacing them, most of them will take like fifteen days to work through it. And we will need to do that with the rest of them.
So you're only replacing six hundred of how many, do you have an answer?
Twenty-four hundred. Twenty-two hundred will stay.
So what is the, what is the, what is the, I mean, what do they recommend, how often do you, you wait till they fail, is that how it works?
Pretty much. Till they fail, till they cannot permeate anymore. Water cannot go through them anymore. We don't have that problem. We have problems rupturing like, pretty much at the same place. Every tiny hole, you can't really see it. You have to submerge it in the water and run the air through it to actually find the hole. And we had a problem like that three years ago, when we were the actual sound representative to us, and three membranes. And we replaced like twenty-eight membranes. Part of warranty.
What is, what is the warranty on the new one?
Same ten years.
Ten years, okay.
This is why we've been putting money aside towards this, because we knew this would happen.
We know that it will happen eventually. Again, no one wants to have a shock in heart, we have to spend like hundreds of grand, for example now. So listen. Like, pretty much you can assume it, like it's not, it's served with a repair, but it's a main damage situation. More than that.
Good.
And according to this, there is enough money in that account to, I'll make a motion to have them, the six hundred replaced.
I hear a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Zenia.
Five-ten. Accept a three thousand anonymous donation to the Oxford PD K9 program.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-eleven, accept a fifteen hundred dollar donation from Thompson Lake Caregivers LLC to the Oxford PD K9 program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Review final years twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget, fund balance policy reserve.
Alright. I've got a handout for each of you here, it's three pages. Yep. So what you got here is on the top is, this is the, the final budget sheet. From what was decided, on the far right you see selectmen approval or budget committee approval. And so just, do you want me to go through every one, or would you like me just to give the final total?
Carry to the total.
Okay. So the municipal total is six million six hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The caveat, that is, remember, the two union, there are the union contracts that we're still working through, but other than that, and I will make sure we update the hauling. And then also, we have the capital. The capital at this point is three hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred going to town meeting. On the next page is the capital items that are going to town meeting, and that is the one-ton truck, or one and a half-ton truck for the highway department. Fifty thousand dollars for the vehicle reserve for the fire department. Saving for the pump station at the, at the sewer department. We have cemetery maintenance for five thousand. And then we have Thompson Lake Dam Repair Maintenance Reserve for ten thousand. Wastewater Treatment Plant Repair Maintenance for forty-five thousand, which is somewhat timely. Transfer Station Recycle Demo Wall for twenty-four thousand five hundred. Those are those, and then I did list, I did list the roads at the bottom, but we're working on that big portion there. The next page you'll find is the Fund Balance Policy account and the other reserve accounts. So, we talked about, just as a, as a side note, to name this something other than Fund Balance Policy. Well, all of these accounts are located in Trio under Fund Seven. So maybe we could just call these the Fund Seven accounts, or we could call, the Fund Balance Policy is actually Fund Seven-O-One. So maybe we could just refer to it as Fund Seven-O-One for clarity, it doesn't get confusing that way, just a thought. But here you have all the, what we've done here is we've got the, the actual balance in the account, what's encumbered, and then after you account for the encumbrance, it tells you what's available. So for instance, with the wastewater treatment facility, there's actually two hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and seven dollars in there. The sixty-one thousand five hundred and fifty of it is already allocated to that generator that was approved last year, which leaves us with a hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So, we've broken that down for all of those. REC is not included on this list, at this time. We're, right now, just firming up the REC numbers and making sure we've got those a hundred percent, and then I'll bring that to you folks. But, so those are those, those three things.
So everything but the REC?
Correct, REC's not included.
I do want the idea of calling it the Fund Seven, I think that that would eliminate the confusion, like instead of calling it the Fund Balance Policy.
And I mean, all of these-
It's a result of the Fund Balance Policy.
Right. It's like, if you look at the, you know, Thompson Lake Dam, I mean, that's Fund Seven Twenty-four. So I mean, if we all start speaking the same language, then we're all saying the same things, and when you guys make motions, it'll be crystal clear too.
Has to be clear with luck.
What is? Number forty on that page.
Cable.
Yep, that's the cable franchise money that we received.
And we use that for, didn't we use some of that for expanding?
Yep, it's been used for like broadband expansion, it's been used for other technology related things in the past, yeah. I'll have a breakdown of the revenues and stuff for you in the future, so you can see how much comes in.
Okay.
Yep.
Any more questions on this, Sean? Good?
The asterisks, you have asterisks after a couple of other things.
Well, that's just, I mean, that's more for me.
Okay. For me to ask questions?
Yeah, that's more for me to go back, there's a few things, I'm just, just getting things tidied up, so.
Okay.
Alrighty. Six-one. Sewer Department Update. Zenia?
Yes.
You come down front. You have to be waiting a bag, be back for it.
So, winds are hopefully almost done. So no more plowing, which makes life much easier. We are seeing between fifty and seventy thousand gallons of wastewater a day. So far, no violations this year. But with the membranes start rupturing, like we have, like some numbers are increasing. For, for example, right now, like last week, the total suspended solids was five point five milligrams per liter. Normally, it's point one to point four. So, I mean, it's slowly sliding. We are not even close, like to meet the limit, limit is thirty. But, again, like they're not, they wouldn't improve, they will just fail eventually. So I think like we are doing it in time, to make sure that we will be in complete compliance with the regulations. Other than that, like it's regular maintenance, and we have some small projects like, like replacing a lip seal on one of the screens and stuff like that, just regular. Nothing major.
Any questions?
Sure. Your timeline on the membranes being replaced? Is that a month, is it six months from now, is there?
No, it's a, six hundred membrane, it's a truck. It's a full truck. I think we will try to do it like in summer. It's, it's a lot of planning will be involved.
Is it something you do?
Yes, oh yeah, yep.
So through-
Yes.
-a period of time.
Yep. It's like, I, I think it will be fifteen days, to do like three months. With help. Will be, begging like fire department, public works.
Shane can come down and help from home.
Oh.
Probably work that out.
What is the delivery time, once you order it?
Uh, I don't know, but it will be brought from the west coast, so I assume like it will be weeks.
So you'll have a timeline for some of it?
Yeah. It's not a good idea to do it in winter, but like, you kind of like will line up time like really good length of this project.
So is it, does it cost us to get rid of them after you get them out of it, or?
Hmm, no, they just can go in regular traffic, unfortunately, because like it's plastic, like unless it was recyclable. But, we can't recycle it.
Good.
So, and I started getting calls about hookups. One of them was New Balance, very interested to hook up to the system, and then there was like few businesses. So, it'll be business training.
Alright.
Did you say New Balance?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, the store.
The store.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Zenia? Thank you.
My pleasure.
Town managers update.
Sure. So just a couple of quick things, the town meeting warrant, working on that, it's a special time of year already. So next week, uh, next meeting, I'll be bringing you guys a draft warrant, so we can start looking at that together. One of the things that I just wanna make sure doesn't get lost, we discussed a while back the idea of the referendum town meeting, not to do a referendum town meeting, but having a warrant article to ask the people if they wanted to do a referendum town meeting. I'm assuming that is still the intention of the board to do that, right?
Of course.
Okay. So I'll make sure that's included. And then, reminder for anybody who is, the papers are due April eleventh, right, Kathmin? So those are all, anybody who's running for office, April eleventh is the deadline, and that is before the next selectmen's meeting, so I just wanted to remind folks of that. That's, that's what I have.
Selectmen items.
Do we have school board seats up this year? As well as two selectmen, two school board?
Water.
Water.
Water, yeah.
Is there still one school board seat open? Or not filled, I should say, right now?
Uh, we have two seats open that are both currently filled.
Okay, okay, I thought we had one that was empty a while back.
I think they're all board now.
Okay.
All the school board seats.
Yeah.
Any selectmen items? Anything, Dan? How about four hundred eighty-one and eighty-six?
Would you be kind enough to grab those for me? Uh, no, they're on the, the thing right outside there. Thank you. You need the signature pages in order to sign these.
Hey, it's your meeting. So is this on, item we're leaving in the minute? Is that the binder?
Yeah, she put those together, if you wanna leave the binders behind, she'll load them up each time and, for the meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
Adam, would be possible if you can email the final budget.
I can do that, yeah. Essentially minutes and stuff. Yes.
You want my copy? It's far from final, because the school board and the county's not final.
Well, yeah.
And the-
Hopefully you're in there.
Ours is final, depending on what passes.
Right, the, yeah, the only thing caveat with ours is the union contracts getting finalized.
Okay.
So the, but that's Highway and Police.
Okay.
But I'll make a note to send it back to you again, once those are done, but that will be among.
Okay, yeah.
How much longer can I turn it into a schedule?
I believe a 14-week program, so-
Oh, so it'll be a while.
Yeah, he's got a little ways to go. And then this is the supplemental. I think that's, that's it. Oh, that one's on you.
This is where somebody can say, "Good help." I won't say that.
Probably should get you on the door.
At least I called it.
Yeah, no, he did.
Ed Truman.
Just like bananas, they're covered in fungus. How are you worried about?
There's two things there.
What are?
There's two things right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Motion assigned, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
The motion is adjourned. Second.
All due. Any other?
Coming up, folks.
Who are the selectmen that?
What's that?
Who are the selectmen that?
All in favor.
Going for another round?
Um, I'm not sure yet. I have a lot going on. Bethel's keeping me real busy. No, I've been, I've been a long time here. I've been through a number of, very much, I've never spoken to her, but I-